It's six P M. The town of Laguna Vista City Hall, Laguna Vista, Texas, seven eight five seven eight. You're showing to the Texas government code, section five five one point one two seven. One of our members of the town council may attend and state via video conference. Form of the town council will be presented to be present at the above meeting. The following items will be discussed. All the order. Invigations.
Yeah. Invigations will be given by the best. Thank you, Russ.
Shall we pray?
Our heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for the say you blessed us with. We want to thank you for being our God. We we just thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. And we just pray that we don't take these blessings for granted. Lord, tonight, as we we just want to lift up a prayer for the our our little town. We we pray for our city leaders and the mayor, the council members. And we're so thankful for their service and and, Lord, as they service this town, we pray that they would look to you for the guidance and the wisdom that they need to lead this town in the best direction. Or thank you for loving us, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Russ. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Constitution. On that day of May. I pledge allegiance to the one who says one who will call.
Councilmember Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Howard.
Sure.
Councilmember Collet.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Dago Bale.
Yeah.
Mayor Carter.
Here. Open forum. At this time, the audience is allowed three minutes per person to address the council on any topic. There will be no discussion of formal action taken during this end item. Speaker must identify themselves as we're speaking. Speaker requests for them to represent to the city's editor prior to the meeting.
We have them.
Yeah, we do. My name is on there.
You have got it on.
I do, it's right there. Y'all didn't think about it.
Mr. Lozey. Come on down.
No, this is late.
They only have a minute and a half left.
That's the finest.
Oh, the wrong form. Well, I've had the wrong form. Now, I would just want to say, you know, I I don't see anybody who is up there when I want to say some words about my buddy Victor. I don't see anybody that was up there when Victor got here. And it was a completely different political climate and and things were tough and 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 the city was struggling a little bit at that point. And and oh, Victor came in here every time and he had already run, already read the package. And and when you watch the city council, you could tell he was the only who had already written the package. You know, and and as the council changed, and now it looks like most people read the package. But at that time, Victor was was our man. And Victor has done a a great job. Victor's a very balanced person. He reads. He he always felt that we were he we were well served by having Victor because he was fair. And he always did the research. I mean, I I told him he was anger attended, but he said he was just thorough. And that I I just, I want to thank Victor publicly for his service. He's done a great job and and I and the city has done a great job. And we've come a long way. And and when I when I read the paper or hear about other cities and I'm involved in another nearby city, I have some knowledge of their politics, that we are so fortunate and blessed to have the people in here tonight that we do. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lozey. New business, interesting consideration, and possible action on each of the following items. Proclamation of gratitude to council member Victor Warrell. Victor, it pains me to say this again. You're here when you may accepted your step down. But whereas the town council of Laguna Vista wishes to express appreciation and gratitude to Victor Warrell for his years of service to the town of Laguna Vista as council member place five. Whereas council member Warrell was first elected as a council member on May eighteen, twenty eighteen. And whereas council member Warrell was reelected on May first, twenty twenty one, to continue serving as council member place five. And whereas the town, the Laguna Vista Town Council, is grateful for the years of service to its and knowledge of town council member Warrell throughout his community over the past five years. Now, therefore, in consideration of all that has been done, we say thank you for willing to serve your community faithfully with integrity and respect for all. We say thank you for your knowledge of the proper rule of order. And we say thank you for your dedication and commitment to the protection of our Laguna Vista Marina, ensuring its operation for many decades, the Laguna Vista resident. We say thank you to your wife, Miley, who continuously supported you throughout your journey here with us. And most importantly, we say thank you for your love of Laguna Vista, its residents, and your commitment to that, to your kept faithfully to serve this great town. To respect that we all have you can't be measured by words we've forever felt in all of our hearts. We wish you the very best in the next season of your life. In order, this thirteenth day of June, twenty twenty three. I would like to say thank you. It was a pleasure to serve with you. And you brought the best of our town. Your commitment to getting done what we got done is we've got a lot done together. I really appreciate it. Thank you. So we're going to miss you. We're going to miss you. The town's going to miss you.
The town's going to miss you. Corrections, amendments, corrections. Corrections and another amendment, change to the city charter, a moment, the elections, a couple of elections that were done on your behalf in terms of how you realized things that needed to be done and done correctly, following policy. A grip. California comes to a small fishing community kind of and and has a great impact. Thank you for your service.
Let me get this one. Come on.
We have some gifts as a token of our collective appreciation for all you've done. And the the city staff put together this wonderful basket for you. And then the council and the staff have picked out this personal gift for you. That a little bird told us is something that we think you're going to really love.
It gets new with me. Yeah. I guess Miami. I'm going to take it to you soon. After you open it, just tell us if you love it.
We'll be we'll we'll be careful.
Brother, brother.
I think we know.
You don't care.
All right. Picture. Yeah.
Okay. Everybody right here, ready? One, two, three. Do you want? Do you want one with your wife? Yes.
Yeah.
Those are
If anyone
You have a cupcake? Please take a cupcake. Can we roast them?
Oh, and then? I'll say. Okay, let's do it. If you retire yourself. And you're and you're your briefcase.
I almost thought you had. I told you.
I have number two minutes. Consideration box will ask you to approve the following minutes, May sixteen, please bring three special counts. You're going to question back.
So.
Motion made by council member Dr. Romero, seconded by council member Solon, to approve the minutes in May sixteen, twenty twenty three, by the town council meeting.
Councilmember Romero.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Collet.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Dago Bale.
Yes.
Mayor Carter.
Yes. I have number three, Texas LNG Brown, with a presentation in that day. Presentation from next decade regarding the status and future of the Texas LNG Brown project.
No, I've invited Andrea Benton to come speak to us to give you guys a brief presentation about the LNG project. So I will let her kick over, but you not performing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Then I'll also
Yes. Okay. All right.
So first of all, thank you, Randy, for the invitation to be here today and present information on on our project, Rio Grande LNG. Um, I'm the head of community relations with Next Decade. And I've been with Next Decade for ten months, almost a year now. I am from Brownsville. And um, previous to this role, I worked for a staffing company. I managed a staffing company for three years out of Harlingen. Before that, I worked for the Brownsville Chamber of Commerce for five years, uh, so direct girl marketing and communications, and I dressed her in a women's business center. So back when I was with the Brownsville Chamber of Commerce, we had LNG panel discussion back in twenty fifteen for the proposed LNG companies, and I helped plan that event. And at that point, there were a lot of questions from the community about, you know, what LNG was. It was so new that we didn't even know what it was. And uh, after that, I feel like, you know, a lot of the business community started to understand what LNG is, but we're still in that process of educating the community of what LNG is and safety, what it's going to bring to the community. Uh, this is just our disclaimer. I won't I won't read through that whole. It'll take the whole time. So um, like I said, we have the Rio Grande LNG as our subsidiary, and we have Next Carbon Solutions. So Next Carbon Solutions is a subsidiary that the company created to find a solution for the carbon capture of greenhouse emissions of the project. So because one of our goals is to uh, reach net zero energy consumption and also in terms terms of reducing CO2 in the environment. So um, when this project was created, our engineers started looking at different ways of carbon capture. And a lot of the processes that are out there require a lot of water. And as you all know, we don't have an abundance of water around here. So they went back to the drawing board and they came up with a process that is a proprietary process for us. It does not require any external water. And we already submitted twenty-three patents and received eight uh approvals so far. So um, this is something that when I hear, I heard, uh, you know, and you know, online or I see that this is greenwashing. It it, you know, it's it kind of like, it upsets me because it's, you know, what if our company was greenwashing, wouldn't be spending tens of millions of dollars to make this carbon capture project work, which is not required for a project, but we want to do it because we want to do the right thing and do uh, you know, the the carbon capture and reduction of emissions. So I'll talk a little bit more about Rio Grande LNG, but we're going to move to the next slide. And I don't have a lot of the slides that I typically have in this presentation to make it a little brief. But uh, in terms of carbon capture during operations, the CO2 carbon capture project will reduce ninety percent of the CO2 emissions of the project. Uh, so these are our vision, mission, values, and environmental, social, and governance commitments. Uh, one of our values is transparency, and that is something that we do throughout any of our activities. Uh, you know, we've created a community advisory board, which Bettina was one of our first members of the community advisory board. Randy is now a member as well. And when we started inviting community members to join this community advisory board, we didn't tell them like, you have to agree with a project or agree with everything that we do. We wanted, we specified that we wanted them to be a part of this uh board because we wanted to learn what the concerns were, if I have any questions, so that we can work on that and try to mitigate any concerns from the community. So we're located in the port of Brownsville in nine hundred and eighty-four acres. So we're leasing nine hundred and eighty-four acres, but the actual footprint of the plant will be just over seven hundred acres. Now, we have uh over four thousand acres that will be for conservation of wetlands, habitat protection for the Ocelot, and also the Las Lomas that we have committed to conserve for perpetuity. And this is over, this is like five times the footprint of our of our project. And um, so our project has a capacity of or twenty-seven million metric tons, which is those four uh tanks that you see there. The tanks are full containment tanks. So that means that if there was ever a leak inside of any of the tanks, the the tank itself will be able to contain any any of the contents of those tanks. And um, we are, we uh, the company selected the port of Brownsville because it's an industrial port. It's a working port. And because of the access that it has to the Gulf of Mexico, also because there's not a lot of traffic of vessels in this port. And at the same time, because we don't get hit by too many hurricanes or storms as other areas. Um, I I already mentioned the the carbon capture process and that we will reduce ninety percent of the of the emissions. And uh, it's also worth mentioning that the emissions will be monitored by a third party. It's a company called Canary Project out of Colorado. So all the emissions will be monitored from the well all the way to the pipeline to the processing plant. And they will, those monitoring, those results will be available to the public. So we're not just saying, you know, you know, take our word for it. You know, we will have that information available as well. Bectol is our engineering procurement and construction uh contractor. And Bectol is the number one company and builder for LNG plants around the world. So they are the premier company. We're very fortunate to have partnered with them. And uh, when we go out to the community and, you know, sponsor events here in Port Isabel, South Padre Island, Brownsville, we talk to the community and they have questions about jobs. A lot of them actually know about Bectol because community members have worked at Bectol plants in other areas of Texas, of Louisiana. And they know about the company, and they're actually excited that we will have a project in town where they will be able to work globally. And Embridge is also one of the number one U S companies for pipelines, and they will be built on the Rio Bravo. So we have our major approvals in hand. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has reapproved. Uh, the projects are where um, all the major approvals are already uh in hand. Well, we have a lump sum turnkey contract with Bectol. And we've already sold two of the trains. And uh, when I talk about trains, trains are those, um, I'll just walk here this way. They are the processing areas for the for the gas. And this is what liquefies the gas. So uh, when we talk about trains, it it's um, kind of like a large refrigerator. And um, when we say that, some of the engineers don't like us to use it that way. But that's, you know, a a good way of explaining is the refrigerator that pulls down the gas to take it to its liquid state. And so we're already in the works for uh, selling the board, uh, the third train. And uh, I'm sorry for, yes, for the third train. And so we plan to uh, have a final investment decision by the end of this quarter. So we have made several commitments to the community, to the Rio Grande Valley community. And we consider a hundred mile radius from the site, our stakeholders, because of the size of the plant and also the number of workers that will be needing. Uh, peak construction, Bectol estimates that they will need five thousand workers on site. Not all at the same time, there's different shifts, but that's the volume that they they estimate. So construction of the first phase will take about five years. So that's about twenty and a half years in. Um, so I discussed the community advisory board, and as part of the community advisory board, we created three subcommittees. One of them is a transportation subcommittee, a housing subcommittee, and an education subcommittee. This is due to some of the comments and concerns from the community advisory board members in terms of these topics. Um, one of them was Helen Ramirez, city manager of Brownsville. You know, what are we going to do about traffic? How are we going to deal with traffic on Highway forty-eight? You know, where are people going to live in terms of housing? So we already uh, had the first meeting of these committees last week. And where we invited housing authorities, the representative for Port Isabel was there. Randy is also planning on sending representatives from Laguna Vista. And we're already talking to Texas, uh, the Department of Transportation, Bectol, to mitigate any concerns. And uh, in terms of housing, a lot of the workers that um may be coming into the area are already from here, but there may be some new uh people that will kind of will look for housing and maybe look for RV parks or hotels or temporary and permanent living. Uh, we also have a a community investment plan where we plan to invest in education, for ready reduction and land property. So these are just some of the the things that we're doing. Now, in terms of jobs, we have committed thirty-five percent local sourcing. And Bectol actually believes that we can do better than thirty-five percent because of the statistics that they see in the workers, the shift posts. A lot of the workers, like I said, that they have working in other areas are from here. So they believe we can do better than thirty-five percent. And this is not just during construction, also during operations, which we estimate we will have three to four hundred permanent workers. So this is an economic impact study that was conducted by the permanent group out of Waco in twenty fifteen. So these numbers are a little bit underestimated. We do plan to update these numbers after our final investment decision. But you can see the economic impact that it's going to bring to, not only to our county, but to the state and the country. So as part of our education and outreach efforts, we conducted nine open house events in the past two months. We had one right uh in Port Isabel on April thirteenth at the uh, it's um, event on cultural center. So at that event, we had uh, two hundred community members attend. And uh, a lot of them had really good questions. And so it was, we had also stations with information from the different areas of the project. We had our subject experts talk to the community. So this uh happened in on April thirteenth, like this. We also had an open house on May sixteenth and May seventeen. Now, this was, we have the same subject experts present in this event, but we also brought an LNG safety demo expert from California, a third party, to show the safety of LNG. It was an interactive demonstration. We had four sessions in Brownsville and four sessions in Harlingen. And what he did is he brought the actual LNG. He had a tray where he poured it. Uh, he poured LNG in a cup of water and then drank it. Most of our attendees were students. So out of the six hundred people that attended this event, four hundred and forty were middle school and high school students. And uh, so there were just, you know, you would see the adults react to to the presentation, but just having the student's reaction was priceless. They were like, wow, no. And you know, they, uh, so LNG is not flammable in its liquid state. You can actually put on a uh match or a cigarette inside of LNG. It is only flammable in its gas state, which is methane, and also has to be at a certain concentration. If it's below five percent, it's too lean. Yeah, I mean, it's too it's too rich, and then about fifteen percent is too rich. So you have to have like, uh, we had a demonstration where we had the LNG and then someone with a with a lighter, and then they would just come closer and closer and closer. They had to get really close for that light to start up. So these are just things that we we don't know or, you know, that people, once they see it, then they realize um the safety. And these are just photos from the event uh that show some of the attendees. So that's all for now. Thank you so much for the invitation and uh, for the opportunity to share this information with you. And if you all have any questions, please.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
Take a breath.
Um, oh, and thank you so much for the presentation. Um, I understand it's funny. You have to live with it, but we can make sure that our communities will be trying to be as safe. Um, so I have a couple of questions. How much of the liquid fire gas will be exported?
All of it.
Hundreds.
A hundred percent for export to Europe and Asia.
How many tankers will have to go or will you through the channel? Want to see if uh it's fully mounted.
Right, it will be once daily or less, it's about three hundred and thirty. So a a year. So it's uh, one state.
And this is really the highest risk for explosion, isn't it?
So actually, LNG vessels are one of the safest in the world. If you read the statistics.
There's still a risk, isn't there?
So there are risks, but uh, our team has expertise, and this was reported by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to look at all the risks. We have what is called the the San Diego area, which is, you know, like, if there was ever any kind of explosion, like, if you if you wanted to destroy an LNG vessel, you literally would have to, like, bombard from both sides. And because those vessels are also self-contained, so if anything spills inside, it will be contained within the vessel as well. So it would have to be like a terrorist attack in order to to have some kind of like tragedy.
Have SpaceX parts flying?
Uh, no, because they they, that is, that was also being studied. And you know, any of the, we've had also a question like, what if an LNG uh SpaceX rocket, oh, they go the other way. They go to the Gulf of Mexico. They don't go this way.
Shouldn't. Okay, that's okay. Um. Much emission will be reduced of what you know, because I know right now, no LNG company is monitoring really a hundred percent of the emission because of what I read and I got my information from, um, it's really hard to detect.
Yes.
And would you have an answer for, do you, do you, does your company know how much emission will be reduced?
So I don't know how many emissions. I know how much we are planning on capturing, but that is something that I can look into and see if there's like an actual number. Like, are you looking like, like in terms of like metric cubes, like how much? Right, I know. But like, how do you want to measure that?
Whatever you can give me, you can give it to me. Per day, per year, in liters, in gallons. Okay. Okay. All right. Um, the next question is about the CCS facilities. Um, I know it will be, or you're planning on building the biggest facility ever. And uh um, and what I read about these facilities, they are very expensive, and you mentioned that before. Um, I do not a hundred percent uh agree with you that it covers um, that you're going net zero. Because you do not know how much the use of facility or the roads or the pipelines. So I applaud the company for doing that. On the other hand, I really, I didn't find enough information. On the other hand, I really, I didn't find enough information to feel good about how you guys just work it.
Okay, I may not personally know, but the company does know how much the emissions would be. And trust me, like, so, the gas, that's how we will be making money. So, you know, they will be doing everything to make it not be released into the environment. So, when we talk about gas, methane gas, you know, like, we will not be releasing that. So, CO2 emissions is different. So.
But methane will be released by accidents, through pipelines or little cracks, or there is no way you can do that safely. I'm just really more concerned. I understand the system, I understand what's going on. But I'm here, I really want to make sure that our community is safe.
Sure, yeah.
And the way we are located at the town wind, if anything happens, I want to make sure. I know we won't be able to stop it, but we can work and make it as safe as possible.
Right. And we have a large team, an HSFC team, that works on all the aspects of safety. And like I said, you know, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission already asked us all this question. If not, the project wouldn't have been approved. So, the information is there. I'll just need to get those specific details for you.
No, I, I just wanted to say that we, we all, with all due respect and fairness, she is, is the representative of the company from the, from the marketing and customer relations side of the company. And I don't think it's fair to expect her to have all the technical answers. And I think her willingness to go back and get them is fair. And this was meant to be an informational presentation to us. And I, I don't, I don't know that she's gonna have all the all those, all those, all those technical answers, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure she will follow up if we.
Right, I mean, she said that she would.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You know, I didn't really say anything against that.
No, no, I know.
This is.
I'll give you to ask them.
But this.
Exactly.
Yeah.
If I would get your phone number and contact information, so we can have that later. But I still believe that this is public and we this is our responsibility as council to make sure to get both sides of the story.
Yes, absolutely. And we do have, I didn't mention that we have a community feedback process that we have been promoting in newspapers, in social media. And what it is, we give in Spanish, I mean, English, where we share with the community. We have a phone line, we have an email inbox, and an online form in English and in Spanish, where we tell the community, what are your questions? Send us your questions and we will answer them. So, and, and then we appreciate questions also in events like this, because that way we know, you know, next time, you know, one time someone asks me, how tall will the tanks be? I don't know, but now I know, you know, like, next time I will know. And, you know, quite honestly, nobody had asked me, you know, how many are the emissions? And that's why I asked you how to measure them, because someone asked me once, how much liquid would the tanks contain, but they wanted it in gallons. So, I was like, okay, so like, how do you want the answer? So, that's why I asked it that way, not to be, you know.
No, no, no.
So, so it's good to know what questions are out, are out there, what concerns. And, you know, I'll give you my business card and, you know, any other questions, you can bring some in my way. I, like Bettina said, I don't have all the answers. I, I don't come from the LNG industry like many of my colleagues that work in Houston. But, you know, we can have answers pretty quick.
That's, that's all I was trying to say. I knew you would get all the answers, but I, I just knew it wasn't fair to expect you to have them tonight. That's all I was trying to say. Just, just take away, they are wonderful about, they, they want, they want you to ask all those questions, you know? You could even come to the community advisory board if you want, because that's why they have them. You know? One, one thing I would like to add, if I may, the agenda, I want to clarify something for everyone here.
Thank you.
The agenda says Texas LNG, and there are two LNG companies here in the valley. There is one called Texas LNG. That is not this company. This company is Rio Grande Valley LNG.
Thank you, Bettina.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry. And I, and this may be information that you can bring back, or I'll get your content, just, thank you for all the information. The mitigation banks that you put together for also habitat conservation and the, and the Lomas where are, where are those mitigation banks? Is that been established?
Yeah, so we, there are some here north of Laguna Vista. And I actually have, I took that out of the presentation because it was gonna be too long, but I have an image here.
And for time, I'll give it to you after.
Yeah, I'll share with you. We have a little graphic that shows the area. Those were, used to be farms, so it's kind of hard to describe, like, what street or what area, but I can show a map of like where the area is.
And how many?
In total, it's four thousand acres. Including las lomas, the wetlands, and the habitat conservation.
My, my one recommendation that, and this may be well down the path beyond so you can give me, is setting aside prior agricultural land and doing habitat restoration with it to try and return it to its native state. It's significantly harder than preserving the limited amount of remaining natural habitat that we have. So, if there are still Lomas that could be preserved and, and native habitat that can be restored, so this mitigation effort, I highly recommend doing that. So, trying to do habitat restoration with. The one other question that I, I had is, this is a very energy-intensive process. Will there be onsite energy production for that, or is it going to be dependent upon the local?
So, that's something that I think it will be a combination.
Okay.
But that's something that we can look.
Because as our area grows, we have five thousand more individuals potentially for this project. That's gonna be a huge. Thank you again for all.
My, my only question would be, if you guys have been in contact with UTRRGV along with the Eco Tourism Center, just, I know in the past, I'm not sure, you guys or another LNG company, about putting up a station there at the tourism center that would monitor the air quality in our community. You guys are directly southeast of our town. And so, any kind of leaks and those kind of things would directly affect us. The southeast, this is the main link.
Yeah.
And so, I would appreciate it, you know, for the benefit of our community and people feel comfortable that we get that monitoring system.
I hadn't heard that idea, but I think that's, that's a good idea.
That was initial worlds. Anybody else? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
All right, number four, branch reports. Review of monthly branch reports.
So, same as, in your team is before you have the balance sheets, the bank statement, and the check register. So, if there's any questions, we are at about ninety percent collected for our revenue for our campaign taxes. So, we're doing, doing quite well on track. And so, if there's any specifics.
I just wanted to say, you should be fifty-eight percent of your expenditures and your fifty-nine. So, you guys are right on track. Thank you so much. Any other questions? All right. Number five, LVPV vehicle. Consideration possible action to approve the recommendations from the CDC for the funding of a police unit.
So, the explanation is kind of in the title, the CDC, a few months ago approved spending sixty thousand dollars to purchase another unit for the Laguna Vista Police Department. It was published, the CDC met last night and had a public hearing. So, it's just right for the town council to ratify the.
And I'm going to approve the recommendation, the CDC for the funding of a police unit.
We are motioned by Councilmember Howard, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez to fund the police.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Solis? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Deacon Vale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. And number six, Mayor Protem. Consideration possible action to appoint, reappoint Mayor Protem as Home Rule C. As a Home Rule Charter.
So, per our charter, every June, you might start to appoint the, or reappoint a Mayor Protem. So, right now, it's Mr. Gonzalez is the Mayor Protem, so he can either be reappointed or you guys can choose another mayor.
Let's thank Commissioner Gonzalez. Yeah, there's a quick timing on this. Better have been in that position. But I would like to put it to the council to appoint Councilmember Howard for Mayor Protem. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Motion made by Mayor Carter, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. To appoint Councilmember Howard as Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Deacon Vale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
For all your time and commitment to our city. I have number seven, appointment of town council member. Consideration possible action to appoint town councilman. I I didn't go out and look for anybody at all. And I was waiting to see the people that wanted to do this job. You have to want to do it. You know, this is not a glorious job, I mean, you don't get paid all the time. And so, you know, I was approached by somebody, and also this person is very active in our community and serves on many boards. And so, I, I make a motion to appoint Teresa Bryant as place five
I'd say. I would just like to say that we have, I serve on the board, Ms. Bryant, on Friends of the Library, and she is extraordinary at all of her many roles that she plays in this community, along with the library board currently. And then, of course, I'm very active in the South Florida League of Community. And, I mean, she has a time, she definitely has a passion for the community. Approached me at the, at the meeting last week, and I said, okay, let's, let's see what's going on here. And I think that we welcome her. She wants to serve a whole part of the things.
Anybody else? Anything to say? Nothing? Okay, count, motion made by Mayor Carter, seconded by Councilmember Howard to appoint Teresa Bryant as Town Councilmember five.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Deacon Vale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Thank you so much. You have a big shoe to fill. But I think you'll do a fine job at it. You, you're a detailed person like he is. You have prior service on other boards, and you've gone through it already. Only ever do it once. So, I'll cover all them.
Okay.
Thank you. I have number eight. Ordinance twenty-two-three-oh-four, consideration possible action on second reading regarding overlay distribution.
So, I, we, Mr. and I have incorporated the changes in what you guys discussed last meeting. And so, we're just presenting this for the second reading for people of the overlay district.
I just want to say thank you everybody for participating in that special meeting and you know, getting this done after all the years that we worked on putting this down. And I'm glad to see that work. Almost there.
Ordinance number twenty-two-three, that's your four, ordinance for town health.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Dr. Romero, seconded by Councilmember Tolan. We approve the overlay district.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Solis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Deacon Vale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Thank you, guys. City manager report.
Okay, so we start with them, so we forget to do the events. We have the July third Independence Celebration opening up on July third, which is three weeks away, but we better not. So, the CDC, as you guys know, did fund half of the fireworks display. That's eight thousand of the sixteen thousand dollars of the fireworks display. To date, we have a commitment of seven thousand eight hundred dollars worth of donations, which is always our goal for that event, is to get enough donations to cover the second half of the fireworks show. Crystal was sending up the follow-ups this week for sponsors that typically sponsor, but we haven't heard from. So, we we, our guest admitted that we'll get up to probably about nine thousand dollars in donations for the event by the time it's all said and done and all the checks are collected. So, we're gonna have the live band of Andrew and the Dancehall Drifters, Doctors, Doctors, I think. They're I don't go out, okay? But they were really popular and they go to, they play at Mount Sunkey Tonka a lot, so it just sort of seemed to fit the bill. So, we're gonna try the live band this year. And top of vendors, pretty, pretty much same as, as, you know, the events as, as before. I don't think we're gonna have anything. The fireworks are kind of the showstopper at this one, so we don't too much to to meet with that. So, if anyone has any questions about the event, that we know or feel on maybe specific or change or anything, that shirt should be in Zoom. We ordered a couple of different things for merchandise to be, just some pousies, visors, just different things. The tank tops for women are really popular, so we ordered a bunch more of those. So.
What contest?
Oh, you know.
Because there is a list.
I know. The watermelon eating contest is always super popular, so that's probably gonna be the, the watermelon eating contest. I know, we are already freaking out about it. My child cut the watermelon for us last year, so, but yeah, if anyone wants to, you know, cut some watermelon, let me know, or has a walk-in fridge, you know? But, so the biggest one is the watermelon eating contest. I don't think we might do and then the contest that we're doing, just the games, we'll have the potato sack races and kind of some of the games like that. I think we bought a limbo game last year. We bought limbo, right? Limbo, yeah, we just didn't have a chance to do it last year. I do know our Zumba ladies are going to do a performance and a kind of an education on Zumba at seven o'clock, and they have a dance and everything to do. So, and then to help promote the Zumba for the city and for the citizens that might not know it's there. And so, we do have Constable, the Constable's niece, I don't know if you guys heard her sing the National Anthem at the oh my gosh, she's incredible. So, she's gonna actually come and open. We don't normally have her open, you know, we don't open, but I just, she's incredible and she'll be here in person. So, she's gonna come seeing the Star Spangled Banner and open at the ceremony or the celebration. So, that'll be good. Um, let me move on to grants. The, right now, we have four, three projects that are in procurement at Grant Works. So, the procurement is just basically like your underwriting for the mortgage company. They look at it, make sure everything's good, make sure we haven't missed anything in getting the right bids, or if there's any other documents or paperwork that we need. As soon as we get the green light from procurement, we'll be able to actually go get the POs and make those cross purchases, which those are the police notebook computers, the library weather stripping, and the library computers. We have the sole source for the cloud storage for E-force that you. Um, we have the sole source for the cloud storage E-force that you approved. Um, I sent in a memo, we had to send in a memo that said this is the why we're not gonna go out for bids. So once, um, that gets approved by the, um, by the grant administration, then we'll just be able to make that purchase. And the trucks, we did secure the POs from the last meeting, the POs were created the next day and they have them at the dealership, we, you know, we won't see them for a while, but the POs are done and hasn't happened. So that, um, uh, the ongoing projects that we're doing is just, uh, we just have Grant Works and then we'll just move to decide the remaining funds, which I will put that on the July agenda when you guys start to discuss budgets. So we're still just in waiting on the tropical storm, uh, or the, the drainage that we got from the two thousand twenty nineteen floods and the tropical storm Meldo, so that grant, because we're still just waiting for those funds to come through. So I got an unfortunate email, um, this last week. We were already denied for our CDVG twenty-three, twenty-four grant application because the current CDVG grant, which was the street project that we just did, um, unfortunately, the grant writer or the administrator of that grant didn't meet a benchmark deadline in time. So we were out of compliance for twenty-two, twenty-two grant. And, um, when I spoke to, I, I attached the email that, um, uh, I got in response and Mr. Montrebon has taken all responsibility. He thought it was, benchmark was met, the TDA has changed their system throughout this last year of how they do things. And so for, for whatever reason, um, he didn't meet the benchmark. So I have reached out to our Grant Works, uh, writer for the twenty-three, twenty-four. I asked if there's anything we can do. Um, she said the lines are pretty black and white with that, that we weren't in compliance as of May third, um, with this current grant that we are finishing up. So they have removed our application for the twenty-six and four. I'm still trying to see if there's anything we can do. But at this point, I don't have news. So, um,
At last denial for that grant, that's the one we're gonna do the drainage though?
No, the drainage one is different. That one's fine. That one did that through GLO and that one has been awarded and that one's good. We just last month submitted for the, the two streets, uh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four CDVG grant. And, um, and we're finishing up the prior twenty, because we missed twenty-two, twenty-three. So it's a twenty-one, twenty-two CDVG grant, and just Fernandez and all of those streets. So it's that grant that's, uh, finishing and Mr. Montrebon had a deadline to submit the benchmark by, I think it was May third, the email said, you get May third. And, um, it wasn't, his benchmark wasn't submitted in time, um, to get it out there. Now, it doesn't affect the remainder payout of that grant. We will still get paid out the final payout for that. Um, granted, it doesn't affect our, the will on that part, but it did affect unfortunately this one. So, um, if you have any other questions?
Goodbye, or future applications?
Is that, sorry?
Beyond the one.
No, it just, it's just any pending ones because for the CDs for the twenty-three, twenty-four, you had to be in compliance as of that date and we weren't. So going forward, we wouldn't be out of compliance and anything else, but it's another year before we can apply for it.
Any questions? I know, you still want to have something to say?
Oh, I just wanted to, uh, want everybody to know that the Rotary Club will not be putting out our flags tomorrow for Flag Day, and the reason for that is that, um, we put them out six times a year with six flag holidays. And, um, three of them get locked together in a five-week period, which is, uh, Memorial Day, Flag Day and Fourth of July, which leaves only three flag holidays to be enjoyed for the remainder of the entire year for our flag customers. So we made a decision to not put them out on Flag Day and put them out on, uh, Pro Harbor Remembrance Day in December, and that allows us to spread out the flag holiday enjoyment a little bit more spread out throughout the year. So, um, I did put that out on Nextdoor and Facebook, but I just want to let everybody know, um, why that's, why that's not. Thank you.
And I want to let, and counsel another, um, to J I presenting the RGV partnership up in West, that we had a meeting with all the mayors from the from the, uh, Rio Grande Valley. And on the twenty-ninth, right, twenty-ninth?
Yes, sir.
Of June, we're gonna have a, an event at the, uh, Garden Arena in Edinburgh where, uh, Governor Anderson comes to speak as, as the main speaker, and it's, it's to try to bring economic development to the Rio Grande Valley. And that, you know, in trying to be a part of that, so we can benefit from all of the, uh, bigger cities willing to put, put their weight into it. So this is a heads up on them. I, I, I know Randy will be saying that much.
I just have one, one other, I just want to throw out there, just because, um, with the, with the result of the, um, storm that we had during Laguna Heights, um, tornado, there was a sinkhole that, um, came out about right next to Executive Inn. So we did have to spend some money to, um, excavate, figure out what the problem was. So the problem is, is that there's a junction box down there that connects the two of the, the lines. And what was happening is when the junction box was put down there, it wasn't sealed, the base wasn't sealed properly. So when we got the rain, um, from that storm, um, the, the sand was kind of being pushed through and go through. So basically the DJ got washed away and then resulted in a sinkhole. So we did have to, um, uh, have it fixed, obviously you can't, there was a sinkhole, and so that, um, that invoice may be coming up with a budget amendment next month. I'm gonna see if I can find it in the budget to, uh, but the repairs came to about nine thousand dollars. Um, that's obviously we weren't counting for, but we did all the proper steps of the bids, and so if we are ever able to do any sort of storm recovery, we'll have that available to us, but otherwise, you know, we just have to take care of it as a city, which taken care of and it's all repaired. And, um, if I can't find the money in our budget, um, to take care of it, uh, come with a budget request.
That's why, that's why we have a strong fund balance. We can take care of our community.
I think I can take care of it within, but I just want to make sure before I.
So I want to make sure everybody knows that we have.
Yeah, we're good.
Anything, anything else?
Not be done here.
I'm sorry. Staffing of these. Yeah, I just go, so we don't have any, um, the, the staff, we, uh, we know we hired Karen, there's hardly no staffing of each other, then I'm working on, um, Carla, I'm sorry, we, um, hired Carla and, um, I'm working on evaluation forms and I'm gonna implement self-evaluation forms, so we can, I know those haven't been done regularly since I started, so and that's what I'm working on with, with that. And, um, I do have the, uh, for emergency management, I have a meeting tomorrow that'll go over just procurement training, so that way I can educate myself. So whenever we do have any disasters where we know how to check ourselves and our, our finances. And, um, I'm still coordinating with Cameron County about the new council presentation that they talked about for, uh, emergency management training for, for you guys as well. So when I get that, um, scheduled or options for that, I will reach out. And, uh, other than that, it's pretty much the basic reports, which I can read at your leisure unless you.
I would be motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilmember Tolan, seconded by Councilmember Howard to adjourn.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember DeCoval?
Yes.
Or Mayor Carter?
Yes. Yeah.
Three days.